Good evening. Welcome to the February 20th Planning Commission Meeting. It is 6:00 PM. So I am convening and calling this meeting to order. Now I'll ask for the roll call.
(phone rings)
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Barnett? Commissioner Nugent?
Here.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Here.
Commissioner Willers?
Here.
Vice Chair Wyerick?
Here.
Chair Donbok?
Here.
Thank you, and let the record show that Commissioner O'Neill is absent today.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve, or does anyone need any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so moved. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyerick?
Yes.
Chair Donbok?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries 6:01.
All right, the next item is the Pledge of Allegions. And may I ask Ms. Diane Daniels to give to lead us?[145.01][145.01](laughter) Thank you, that was beautifully done.[168.79][168.79](laughter) The next item is to take comments from the public. Now, these comments are with regard to items not appearing on tonight's agenda. We have a full house, which is fantastic. And so we'll see how many comments we have. I don't want to restrict people unless there are a lot. So let's start and see how it goes. When you come up, just please offer your name and spell it if needed. Comments that are not on the agenda.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carla Noiz. I live off of Madrone Road. I'm here to introduce you to an innovative and natural method for reducing flooding in the Nathanson Creek watershed. That's the creek that drains down First Street West here. Beaver Dam analogs, or BDAs. These structures are human-made, yet mimic the natural dam construction by beavers. They consist of wooden poles anchored into the stream bed and woven around with willow branches. They work by slowing the flow of the water, allowing sediments to settle and create pools that can absorb and store water during heavy rain. This reduces the speed and volume of water downstream, thereby mitigating flood risks. By promoting groundwater recharge and enhancing riparian habitat, BDAs contribute to the overall health of the watershed. Last spring, for an independent study project, I generated a report focusing on improving the fish habitat in Nathanson Creek watershed for the Sonoma Ecology Center. This report identified 39 properties that would be ideal for BDAs. I've given the report to the Ecology Center, but they say they do not have funds to support this project. However, currently, for the moment, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will design, permit, and build BDAs at no cost. All they need is a willing landowner. Thank you for considering this valuable tool in our efforts to reduce flooding and protect our watersheds, and I'd be happy to discuss this further. My contact information is in my notes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Robert Demmler, First Street West, Sonoma. It's been a long time since I was at a Planning Commission meeting, and faces change and some just move chairs. So happy to see you all. I'm here to invite you on behalf of the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation to our first educational presentation for 2025. Last year, we had four. Some of you attended, we appreciate that. This year, we have Cindy Heitzman, who is the Executive Director of California Preservation Foundation. So it's a rare chance after the presence, after the talk from Cindy, to ask questions that may be on your mind or may be triggered by something that Cindy says that night. The title of the presentation, and I have to read it to you because my 84-year-old brain can't think this long. Investing in the Past, Building for the Future, Financial Incentives, Legislation, and the Case for Historic Preservation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So Cindy is quite heavily involved in the legislative process. She helps the Assembly write laws and so forth. So I think it's a rare chance for you all to be there, and we welcome you. There is no charge. It starts at 6:30, but you can come a few minutes early, at least have one glass of wine. There's no charge, there's a donation jar. But seeing that you all give all of your time to the city, why don't you just have a glass of wine and forget the donation jar? But I'm not telling the public that, and you all are invited as well. So thank you very much, and thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you.
I'm quite relieved that I have three minutes because I practiced this, and it took me a minute and 52, but I spoke very fast, so I could slow it down. Good evening, my name is Janet Boyle. I live on Brazil Street, and I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding the proposed land use changes for the 20-plus acre commonly known as Sebastiani. Since learning that a developer had approached the city to request these changes, I have dedicated much of my time to understand their request and the impact that it could have on me and the entire city of Sonoma. What I cannot understand why, and I know that I'm naive in this, I've never worked in city government, nor do I understand what the heck's going on, but I'm just expressing from a homeowner's standpoint. But it seems like the developer's request bears more weight than the many homeowners who have expressed their concerns to this body, the city council, both verbally and the meetings since December and in writing, including me. I was told that the current owner cannot, or maybe more likely does not, want to use the land as it's currently zoned, and I do not understand why their request is garnering so much support over the objections and concerns of the surrounding neighbors. The good news is, is I recently learned that another wine production company has just signed a three-year lease to use the winemaking facility, which I think confirms that there is a need and a market to use the land as it currently sits. Therefore, why do we have to change it? My concern is, is that if we go down this path of changing the land use description, which is currently, which in its current draft state is very vague and broad, which we saw a preview of in the January 30th Vintage House meeting, we could end up with a large mass of population, whether that be 550-plus residential units, and I know that's the 7 to 25, you know, 22 acres by 25, 550, which could easily translate to 1,000 more cars at the corner of Fourth Street and Spain, or a combination of hundreds of residential units and a high-traffic commercial business such as an In-N-Out Burger, which I do love In-N-Out, but I'm not sure I want all that traffic. And that would be right in the middle of a low-density residential area. Someone pointed out in the January 30th meeting, the zoning, the plan that was proposed or left on the tables had a red, you know, it was outlined, the Sebastiani property was outlined in red, and all the surrounding areas in its current state was low-density in yellow. It looked like a sore thumb. And, now I lost where I was. Okay, so that'd be right in the middle of a low-density area. So not to mention, an already busy thoroughfare for residents coming down from Garricki and from Level Valley and the Loop, but that additional congestion would likely present a safety issue regarding any kind of emergency evacuation, which we've all been through that, or a safety issue to the hundreds of people that currently walk around this area. Therefore, I ask that we leave this land as it's currently designated, which I believe is two parcels zoned as agricultural, two parcels zoned as mixed-use, and one parcel as wine production. Thank you for your time and serious consideration. Three seconds.
Thank you.
It's okay if you go over a little bit.[628.79][628.79](laughter)
Oh, don't tell us that. Good evening, Commissioners, and hi, Jennifer. My name is Becky Sager, and I live on Wilking Way. And thank you for your service to Sonoma, we all really appreciate it. My comments also concern the land use proposal for Sebastiani Winery. At the meeting on January 30th, the update, we learned that the new Sonoma mixed-use designation would accommodate a mix of commercial, residential, and wine-related agricultural uses, and that the proposed residential density is 7 to 25 units per acre, or medium and high-density. This is more specific than what we had seen before, which we appreciated. It implies broader commercial use than what we had seen, and high-density housing was also a surprise. So I join my neighbors tonight in believing that this broadly-defined designation with no apparent restrictions, applied to the entire property, is simply not acceptable. The broad, what I'd like to focus on is this, you'll hear from some of us with a little bit of a different perspective. The broad land use designation ignores serious risks to Sonoma residents and issues that we know exist today. We don't need an environmental impact report to know that we have significant risk of fires, and that with the population we have today, there's risk to human life due to the roads out of town and the traffic that slows evacuation, the few roads out of town. If anyone needs more proof, you look at the study released by the Valley of the Moon Alliance, and that assigns even more urgency and numbers to the risk. But I don't think we need any more proof if we all lived here in 2017 and 2020, and we have friends who live here and up the valley. We know that the traffic in Sonoma is already congested. Forget about the fires for a moment, and adding more housing units and hotels will exacerbate that. When it rains and Shellville floods, it takes 25 minutes to get across town to Arnold Drive to go south. I mean, that's just a fact now, with the population we have now. We also know we're an area prone to drought, and may in any given year have water restrictions with the population we have today. We know that residents of Sonoma want more green space, not less. And yet, the city's proposing changing even the six acres of vineyard and park along the bike path and Level Valley Road to mixed-use, broadly-defined, basically no guardrails, as far as I can tell. With that context, how can you open up over 20 acres to allow broadly-defined commercial and high-density housing, potentially up to 25 units per acre on over 20 acres? I mean, that's what that does. We don't know what developer's going to come down the road in three years. 25 units per acre on 22 acres. It's simply not feasible, and it can't be supported by Sonoma's current infrastructure, which is inadequate even for the current population. So let's please use common sense. If necessary, do an environmental impact assessment before you decide to expand the land use designations for the winery. Preserve six acres of agriculture as agriculture. Don't rezone them, don't change the land use designation. Define the commercial uses specifically and confine them to low-impact commercial uses. I'm not personally opposed to any commercial use, but I would be opposed to In-N-Out Burger, and I would be opposed to a general plan that says you can do anything you want that makes money. Minimize the density of the housing that would be allowed, and consider the water, the parking, and the roads that will be required to support any new housing. And I did it within three minutes, I think. Thank you very much, thank you for your attention. We really care a lot, and this is critical. And it's right in front of us, we know, right? We know the problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Krista Holden, I also live on Wilking Way, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am too, here to express some pretty deep concerns about the proposal about the 20-some-odd acre of the Sebastiani Winery property. I'd like to put it, the scale of this proposal into perspective, as I was looking around town. Our Sonoma Historic Downtown Plaza is only about 12 acres, with four of those acres dedicated to commercial use, eight of which is the park. The proposal in the general plan for the Sebastiani property would nearly double that land use footprint of our entire downtown district, and place it within a rural residential neighborhood. This is not an appropriate or responsible land use decision. Sweeping land use change of this magnitude has negative impacts on not only our immediate neighborhood, but really our whole Sonoma community. The character of this area, its infrastructure, its roads, traffic patterns were never intended to accommodate such a transformation. I urge you to reject the drastic and ill-fitting proposal. As mentioned, I also learned last night that NakedWines.com has signed a three-year lease with the Sebastiani property, or with Foley, on the Sebastiani property to produce and sell wine, which was clear evidence to me that the site still remains a very desirable and viable winery production facility, just as it has been for over 100 years. Maintaining the current agriculture and wine production land use zoning for the entire Sebastiani Winery property to me is the highest and best use of this land. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Stokes, I'm also a resident of Brazil Street. I've achieved a three-peat, I think I've been in front of you three months in a row now, something the Kansas City Chiefs couldn't do.[971.19][971.19](laughter) Of course, San Francisco couldn't either, but anyway. I have four points I want to make tonight. The themes are similar, but the arguments are different. I will read in the interest of time. The city's number-one priority must be on assuring, or at minimum not increasing, threats to the safety of the community, including residents and visitors. The Sonoma Valley has its own unfortunate history of fires, and the recently-publicized SAFE Study regarding evacuation times for up-valley residents living near the SDC serves as a stark reminder and warning of the importance of getting this component right. As such, any proposed large-scale land use and/or zoning changes impacting the winery property must include and respect the results of a thorough, well-documented, and transparently-presented evaluation of the emergency egress and ingress impacts on the city and nearby areas, especially in the event of a wildfire or other mass evacuation event. That's taken, Becky made the same point. Point number two, if the city is serious about valuing, preserving, and protecting open space and agricultural lands as is stated in the vision statement, there is no justification to include the two parcels currently designated agriculture located at the western and eastern ends of the winery property and adjacent to other vineyards in the proposed general plan land use change. Carve these two parcels out of the proposed site-specific land use changes and keep them as they are in the current general plan. Point number three is with regard to density. If the city is to be respectful of the neighborhood in which the winery property is located, the proposed residential density of 7 to 25 units per acre is simply not acceptable. It should be set at something much closer to the existing medium-density residential range of 7 to 11 units per acre at worst. The residential properties surrounding the winery property are 75% low-density at 2 to 5 units per acre, and 25% medium-density, 7 to 11 units per acre, that refers to the Los Casitas Development to the west. Mathematically, this translates to a weighted-average maximum allowable density, maximum, of 6.5 units per acre on the adjacent properties under current zoning. The proposed density of 7 to 25 units per acre would raise the minimum units per acre to 108% of the current maximum, I have the math, but I won't bother to share it with you, and represent a 385% increase in the maximum allowable density versus the current maximum. These are extreme increases in both the required minimum and the allowable maximum densities that are likely to have severe negative consequences for the surrounding neighborhood. Finally, going back to the language of the yet-to-be-fullly-defined and named site-specific designation, the language specifies, the language specifying allowable uses for the proposed site-specific Sonoma mixed-use has evolved through various presentations and discussions, but it is still not specific enough. We have been led to believe that only visitor-serving commercial uses would be allowed in the newly-created land use definition. If that is the intention, the language needs to be made much more specific and clear regarding that limitation. Adding a, for example, list of commercial uses that would not be allowed should clearly be considered. The language has evolved, but it's still, if you read it, it allows visitor-serving, it doesn't restrict it to visitor-serving, and that's simply unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bob Flanagan, and as a few people before me have talked about Sebastiani, I too am here to talk about the Sebastiani property. I am concerned about the proposed rezoning of the multiple parcels of the site into a single newly-defined land use classification. As I understand it, creating a new land use definition is highly unusual, which alone prompts scrutiny. The fact that it seems to be prompted by a developer's outline of a proposed project creates a deep concern that the city may be favoring the interests of a few over the desires of many. Applying a new and expansive land use definition to the largest single property within city limits creates enormous potential for development that is incompatible with the values our community and the council have asserted. As one point of reference, consider the vision statement from the current general plan. A few excerpts. "Sonoma will be a place where development respects the availability of natural resources and enhances the scale, character, and natural setting of the community. The community's history and its role as a cultural center are enhanced through careful preservation of historic features. Open space and agricultural lands are protected, both in and around the city. This site is surrounded by low-density housing and agriculture. On the property are numerous historic elements, including one of the oldest vineyards in the state and a state-designated landmark building. Any change to the permissible land use of the Sebastiani site should explicitly protect all of these things, but as drafted, the proposed Sonoma mixed-use definition instead provides a wide berth for development. While we protect our values, we also need to be cognizant of the pressures of the present as we plan for the future. Fire risk is significantly higher today and will continue to rise, as the CAL FIRE rerating of the areas around us indicate. Any significant development of the Sebastiani site will severely stress the egress of all residents on the east side in an emergency. Protection cannot be left to chance. The land use definition applied to Sebastiani and other sites should overtly create protections against development that could create or increase risk to life and property. In sum, I encourage the city to focus on the needs and desires of the entire community as we develop the general plan for the next 20 years. The proposal to reclassify all of the parcels within the Sebastiani site to a newly-defined and expansive land use category is just not acceptable." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Dixon, I live on Level Valley Road. I'm fourth-generation Sonoma, no one knows who I am, I've been gone for 24 years, serving overseas, finally got to come home, and I was really excited about coming home because of all the changes that have happened, and for the positive. I mean, I remember Holtz's Drugstore, and my grandfather taking me to get ice cream there, I remember the hardware store on the corner of Napa and First Street East, and I remember when Oralde's was on the east side, and now it's over on the west side. So I, and I also remember negative things, like, you know, Food City over there, it wasn't much of a popular grocery store. But anyway, I've seen a lot of changes in Sonoma, and I'm really, I was really excited about coming home because of the positive things. You know, a lot of people come from Cattati, Petaluma, Santa Rosa, the Tuesday Night Market, they can't live here. We have a special place here, and I feel like we're ignoring that reality, that all the good, positive things that you guys have done and everybody else has done in the city. And this is about the Foley project, I'm really concerned about the mixed-use. I'm on Level Valley Road, and it's, you know, we know it's going to impact that road, and I'm not sure if you, the county, who knows what the county's thinking about doing with that, so I'm not sure even about that. But in my point here, I would like to talk a little bit about the merchants on the plaza. This is going to directly affect that, that area. I mean, for those merchants, they're going to lose business probably with this mixed-use shop possibility that would happen over there at a Foley property. We already know how bad it can be to drive down through the plaza on Spain Street on a Saturday or Sunday. It's going to be 100 times worse, all those parking, all the people parking everywhere. I'm just really, I wonder if, we have a new hotel coming in, you know, where the Sonoma Exter Bum building is, I don't know what's going on with that, but there's a big hotel there, too. So why do we need another, what is it, 150 rooms? I'm not sure how many it was supposed to be at the Foley project. But we understand what's going to happen here. We're going to move the center of town from the plaza to possibly over there. We'll end up just like Napa, where we've got hotels everywhere, and everyone, no center anymore. We have to understand the things that we've gained and the positives this city has become. I mean, I can, my grandmother went to high school, the first graduating class of Sonoma High, and so there has been a lot of positive things that have happened, and some really confusing, poorly planned-out ideas, and I'm not sure you understand the impact it will have on the neighbors, on the merchants, and everyone else tonight. And I know developers have their plans, and they will tell what you, what they want to do, but they always end up changing it anyway, and we're going to suffer for it if we're not careful, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Hello, my name is Erin McTaggart, I'm a longtime resident, and so is my family of Sonoma. I live on Church Street, I own lots on Brazil Street, my mother lives at 402 Fourth Street East, which is at Spain Street and Fourth Street East. I've already mentioned before that the traffic is already bad. My mother wanted to mention that there is a Sonoma rush hour, where people cut over from Napa, you know, East Napa Street onto Fourth and up Spain, and we all know that that happens. So both my mother and I would like to say that if the Foley property were to be developed in this loosey-goosey, very much undefined Sonoma mixed-use new category, that it would definitely impact traffic, which is already bad. And we have no presence of police to enforce people that consistently run at least the Fourth Street East stop signs. So that's one thing. Another thing is that one of my friends here pointed out that I was quoted in an article, an online article, that appeared yesterday online when I was speaking to, I believe, the city council on the 3rd of this month, and I just want to correct that I said, you know, banned properties that aren't banned, stores that are not allowed on the plaza because they are chain stores, basically, right? They said, I said "bad" properties, I said "banned" properties, by the way. But any of those types of stores would be inappropriate for the east side at the winery property. So those two things, traffic's already bad, the bridge won't support traffic, it's a big loosey-goosey, ill-defined, new, you know, mixed, Sonoma mixed-use, and it does seem like you're just, the city is having a new definition of a zoning for only three developers. So, and I hope you do heed the, heed what we're saying as residents and property owners of that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie King, and I just, listening to all these other comments, I've been involved in this neighborhood group as well with regard to Sebastiani property, and I guess I would just add, I live on Seventh Street, so Seventh Street and Castle, and, you know, when the fires came through, we had a front-row seat on the fire trucks going down Castle, going up Seventh, so much activity. It was, I mean, like all of us, it was remarkable. But I also want to add the whole impact on the water. I was thinking about it, I think we've had five new wells put in on Seventh Street alone over the last year and a half, I'm going to say approximately, including our property. And, and I just don't know the impact, I'm sure that it would affect the water table if a hotel and maybe a swimming pool or additional pool was on that water system. So I just wanted to add those things from my vantage point where I sit, over there in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your comments tonight. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. So I'll ask if anyone has any changes or edits that need to be made to that. Okay, seeing none, I ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, so the consent calendar has moved to approve, maybe we have roll call?
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Abstain, I was absent.
Commissioner O'Neill? I'm sorry. Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick?
Yes.
Chair Dombach?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 60, I'm sorry, 5011.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to the public hearing portion, and item 4.1, which is a discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a use permit for a restaurant at 201 West Napa Street.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Jacob Dunn, associate planner. This item is brought forward for Equator Coffees for a restaurant use permit at 201 West Napa Street in Suite 5. The proposed project is located on a .82-acre commercial lot in the downtown district within the historic overlay, and the suite area is 750 square feet. Here's an image of Suite 5. It's next to the gazebo near Whole Foods. The proposal includes installation of new counter spaces for preparation and customer service, a new screen door at the front entrance which will match the existing door color, new outdoor seating to accommodate 34 guests and two ADA seating, two signs, one on the existing 24-square-foot sign plate that you see in the picture there, and a new nine-square-foot walkway sign. There's also indoor seating to accommodate five guests and one ADA seating. As a frame of reference, this is the current site plan for the suite. They're proposing demolishing a portion of the wall, cabinet, and door, and will be replacing the ceiling tiles and HVAC. This site plans the proposed site plan, which shows the new counter spaces for food preparation and customer services. The site plan also includes the layout for the indoor and outdoor seating with the spacing for access there. These images show the proposed signage for the sizing and style, and includes a new walkway signage which meets the requirements for the master sign plan on this property, as well as the seven-foot height requirement for clearance. So the proposed café requires a use permit in the planning area and must meet the standard use permit findings. The use is consistent with the intent of the commercial zoning and provides a small-scale local serving retail business, and the proposal meets the development standards of the planning area and doesn't alter the existing structure or impair its architectural integrity, and it is compatible with the style and design of the neighboring suites. So staff is recommending approval of the use permit for Equator Coffees at 201 West Napa Street and Suite 5, and is available for questions, and the applicant is also prepared to speak on behalf of the project.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to step to the mic?
Good evening, Chair Dombach and members of the Planning Commission. My name is J.P. Lachance, president of Equator Coffees, here this evening to speak about our proposed project at 201 West Napa Street. We're very excited about this potential location here in Sonoma. It exemplifies everything we look for in a community café, a vibrant merchant corridor, easy walking, easy parking access, and an overall community character. A little background on Equator, we were founded in Marin in Cordermadera in 1995. We have since grown organically in response to consumer demand with wholesale, retail, and e-commerce channels. We roast all our own coffee at our roastery in San Rafael, and we wholesale to restaurants, cafes, companies, grocery stores, and universities, including a 20-year partnership with Thomas Keller at The French Laundry and a 20-year partnership with Nugget Markets. We also started opening retail stores in 2013 and have opened approximately one per year since then. We've been looking to expand to Sonoma for some time, and we finally feel like we found the perfect spot. At Equator, we make it a priority to stay involved and act in all of our communities. We are passionate about getting back to our local communities, as well as our farming partners at origin, which is why we created Cup For Our Cause, a monthly fundraiser benefiting different nonprofit organizations. We've raised over thousands of dollars for organizations like Bay Area Ridge Trail, Moms Against Poverty, Center for Domestic Peace, Marin Foster Care, Guide Dogs for the Blind, National Hispanic Women's Association, and the International Women's Coffee Alliance. We are active members of the chamber and the communities we participate in, and we've already spoken with Mark Bondenhammer, CEO of the Sonoma Chamber, about joining the Sonoma Chamber of Commerce. We've also spoken to Mark about our plans for opening week. We typically do a donation to a local nonprofit, and Mark suggested that we work with the Sonoma Valley Mentoring Alliance, either through a donation or by publishing their coffee sleeves during our opening. We host community events. We participate in community events, whether it's Fourth of July parades, holiday bazaars. We participate in offering coffee and donations to local schools. In general, we're a very community-focused organization, and we're very excited to be part of Sonoma. This location will bring approximately 12 full-time and part-time jobs. We offer competitive wages. We pay 100% of our employee healthcare, and we also offer a very competitive 401K with a 4% match, as well as a host of other benefits. Again, we're extremely excited to be in line for this potential opportunity to join the Sonoma community, and now we're happy to answer any questions, and we also have our architect here, Sarah Fuchinara, who can also answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'll turn it to the commissioners and ask at this time if you have any questions, not comments, but questions for the applicant or staff.
How many locations do you have?
Of cafes, we have 12, 10 in Northern California, 2 in Southern California.
Anyone else? All right. So I will thank you, and I'll open up the, to public comment if there's any on this particular topic. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and again, offer commissioner comments for this project.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
May I make one comment?
Sure.
We'll make a motion, and I'll comment later.
Okay, I was going to make a motion to approve a use permit for a restaurant at 201 West Napa, including the action to approve a categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the state sequel guidelines.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and now we'll have a roll call, please. I can make the comment after roll call.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick?
Yes.
Chair Dombach?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 601.
So the comment I will make is, first of all, I really appreciate that Equator Coffees is investing in Sonoma and helping us to create a more vibrant economy and gathering space, so thank you. All right, and we'll move on to item 4.2. This is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a wine tasting use permit and taproom permit at 5 East Napa Street.
So this item is brought forward for Parkside Wine Bar for a wine tasting use permit and taproom permit at 5 East Napa Street. The proposed project is located on a .1-acre commercial lot in the downtown district and Plaza Retail Overlay District within the historic overlay. The proposal includes the approval of a taproom permit to provide a selection of beer, also includes live music entertainment at least three times a week, approximately two hours during the regular operating hours. The proposal's also asking for an extended operating time for 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., whereas the standard times under this permit are 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., or sorry, yeah, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and seating for 23 guests with one ADA table and two ADA accessible tables. So this is the floor plan showing the proposed seating arrangements for normal services and during live music. The proposal requires a use permit and must meet the standard use permit findings, so the use is consistent with the intent of the commercial zone and provides the small-scale local serving retail business, and it meets the development standards of the planning area, and it doesn't alter the existing structure or impair its architectural integrity, and was found to be compatible with the style and design of the neighboring suites. Wine tasting use permit is also necessary, there's findings for the wine tasting use permit, which comply with the use for the zone, and the proposal meets the general requirements for wine tasting rooms and the development standards. It also conforms with the existing land uses in the vicinity and is compatible with the future uses for downtown districts. And staff has reviewed the number of wine tasting facilities in the Plaza Retail Overlay District and found that there's a combined total for 25 at the moment, with the site operating as a wine tasting facility since 2015, so it's continuing that use. It also, there's also a requirement for block streets facing, for wine tasting facilities that are facing the Plaza, and so since this facility is grandfathered, it's not going to be increasing the number of facing wine bars on the Napa Street block face, and the use doesn't result in further concentration of establishments that are dispensing alcohol. The area is designated for commercial and mixed uses, and the project doesn't propose increasing the size or activity level for the site, and no changes are proposed to the exterior. There's also taproom findings required for the taproom permit, so this doesn't, this requires that it doesn't further concentrate, further concentrate the alcoholic establishments, and that the uses are consistent with the commercial and mixed-use zones, and the proposal is compatible with the character of the surrounding commercial uses, and the taproom doesn't expand the number of facilities in the overlay. So staff recommends approval of the wine tasting use permit and taproom permit for Parkside Wine Bar at 5 East Napa Street, and is available for questions, and the applicant is also present and is prepared to speak on behalf of the proposal and answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to? Okay. Let's just have the applicant come on.
Hi there. My name is Kelly Bush. Parkside Wine Bar was opened in September of 2023 to provide a fun, eclectic wine tasting experience on the Sonoma Plaza. The primary focus was to offer a welcoming and relaxing atmosphere with both patrons, both local and tourists could enjoy a more curated selection of wines alongside small snacks. I am here today to ask for a taproom approval. We would like to broaden our appeal to bring more customers into our space, as well as live music.
Thank you, and there are some questions from commissioners?
I'm a little unclear as to the precise location. Can we pinpoint which spot this is?
Between the bank and Oso.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wyrick?
It's immediate past use. Jacob was a wine tasting facility, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
So just to clarify, the reason why when you're grandfathering in a wine tasting and then you're wanting to add an additional use or modify what the nonconformities are, that's when we trigger a new wine tasting use permit? So that's why you're seeing that as well.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. I again turn it over to the commissioners for any comments. All right, seeing no comments, then I'll ask for a motion on this agenda item.
Public comment? Did we do that?
I did, and people were quite happy to sit in their chairs. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve wine tasting use permit and taproom permit at 5 East Napa Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is approved, so maybe we have a roll call.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick?
Yes.
Chair Dombach?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 601.
And I will offer the same comment. Thank you for investing and continuing to invest and expand our economy, and totally understand why you want to expand to other types of adult beverages, based on what we're seeing in the wine industry. So the next item is item 4.3, and this is a discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve the reconstruction of a nonconforming structure at 19425 Sonoma Highway.
So this item is brought forward for the reconstruction use permit at 19425 Sonoma Highway. The proposed project is located on a 1.44-acre commercial lot in the West Napa Street/Sonoma Highway corridor. The proposal includes reconstructing the barn to be used as a storage space for Napa Auto Parts by replacing the interior and exterior siding on the south end of the structure, replacing the interior stud walls, repainting the exterior siding on the north end of the structure to match the existing color, and constructing a new sloped walk on the west side for ADA access. So this floor plan shows a proposed reconstruction and restoration of the structure along each wall and the interiors. The yellow, orange, and red walls will be reconstructed while the green walls will be repainted. The dotted entryway is the location of the new ADA accessible ramp for the structure. This analysis shows the nonconformities of the structure, which are the front and street-side setback, the side setback, and the height of the structure. These nonconformities will remain the same and will not be expanded further. The proposal requires the use permit and the findings for standard use permits. The use is consistent with the intent of the commercial zoning, and the reconstruction supports the primary use on the property. The zoning allows for the barn to be used as an accessory storage structure with the approval of this use permit, and the reconstruction will not alter the existing use of the site. The reconstruction will improve the architectural integrity by restoring the structure and preventing further deterioration. Nonconforming structure findings are also necessary to allow the proposed use, so the improvements will not increase the structure's nonconformity, the height and setbacks will remain the same, and the replacement of exterior siding is no more than 50% of the length of all exterior walls and doesn't include more than 50% of the original floor area. The reconstruction will not impact a nonconforming use of the land either. Staff recommends approval of the use permit for reconstruction of the nonconforming structure at 19425 Sonoma Highway and is available for questions. The applicant is also present, available to answer any questions as well.
Okay, any questions from staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Barnett?
I didn't see any indication in this staff report of the treatment of the exterior. I mean, I'm pleased to see this happening, but is there anything that can be provided that indicates to how the exterior is going to look? In other words, is the color going to change? What color is it going to be, and so forth?
It's intended to remain the same color and look compatible with the original style.
And my recollection is that there is a mural on the building. Is that going to be retained?
That was discussed. It may, there's discussion as to whether it might match the color of the exterior as it is or consistent with the mural.
Would the applicant like to come on up?
In regards to the mural, we have been discussing with the owner possibly, can you hear me, possibly repainting it. The plan right now is to paint over it and have it match the building. I looked up on Google Maps, I think the mural is only eight, nine years old, so it's not historically significant, although I think we all enjoy looking at it. Sort of a Sonoma landmark. I think we are all very accustomed to having it there.
Is there, I guess, I mean, clearly the building is still showing the effects of the fire and the period of difficulty.
Yes.
Is it an expectation that, for example, I'm assuming that all these roof structures that are looking like they're dilapidated and decaying, they're all going to be replaced, all these exterior, the things visible from the street are all going to be cleaned up?
Correct. So in the burn structure, that will all be replaced and rebuilt where we marked.
Yes.
The roofs will be all replaced and rebuilt.
Okay, and like on the second floor of the barn structure, looks like there's a piece of plywood or something filling what was a window.
Yes.
What's the plan for that?
We're going to infill that to match the siding next to it.
So you're going to eliminate the window?
So we want to retain the window because it is, we believe it's historically significant to the design of the old barn section, so we will keep a window cut out, and you'll see siding kind of setback, so that it is still apparent there was a window there.
Okay, and it looks like it has a sliding barn door on it?
Yes.
In the front? You're going to retain those?
They'll be retained. They're inoperable, and they'll just be put back the way they were.
Okay, and the little shed area that I'm looking at in this photo to the right of the barn, that also will be rehabilitated? It looks like it's got some plywood nailed on the siding as well.
Yes, correct. That'll be rehabilitated as well. Yes, correct, that'll be rehabilitated as well. Exactly the same size, length that it is now.
And, and as to signage, since this is going to be part of your business, is there any plan for signage on the building, or to identify it in any way?
No new signage. No new signage.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anything else?
I, I, go ahead, I have a question, go ahead.
I have a comment. The murals, Sonoma, the Rotary Club of Sonoma Valley, of which on a past president, we did install those about nine years ago. Personally, I'd love to see them remain.
I agree.
Any other questions?
I have one question, and with regard to the, I know the setback is small, but that grassy area, are you intending to maintain that as grass, or turn it into like more of a walkway?
In front of the burn structure?
Yeah, yeah.
Maintain it as grass.
Okay, thank you.
That raises another question for staff. Typically, when a sidewalk, sidewalk is required when a certain amount of work is done on a residence, does the same criteria apply to a commercial building? Obviously, you know, I'm not sure how, how deep this is, it looks like it's two or three feet deep. There's no sidewalks on that side of the street at all. What's, what's the, what's the application of the sidewalk requirements in a situation like this?
So normally with commercial, it would be based on a percentage of, or sorry, not a percentage, but that max cap that we're looking at adjusting actually right now. In this case, because it is a fire damage that we all want to see restored, that sidewalk is an issue, and it's, it's not quite feasible, but we're, we can work with the applicant on doing something that improves, because we do know lots of people walk that area, but to improve that without putting in a full curb and sidewalk in this vicinity.
Okay, because it's notable even in this photograph, you can see that there's a crosswalk that's provided, as well as a sign for pedestrians that indicates when you should or shouldn't walk, but there's really nothing to walk to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Caltrans?
Well, certainly Caltrans has purview over Highway 12. My, my question or comment is that rather than the grass, might it make more sense to put in something like crushed granite, or whatever it's called, decomposed granite, which, you know, provides a stable surface even for wheelchairs and, and other, other things, so that this doesn't become a pedestrian path to, to basically weeds and walking through the weeds? And would, you know, if extended all the way down, at least to the corner, to the big bend there, would, would provide a better way for people to get to the, to the bridge and to Riverside Drive and the other areas there, without feeling like they're skirting the street? So just, just a comment.
Yes, Commissioner.
We have to be careful about this, that's in the state highway right of way. And so any work that occurs within that right of way has to be approved by Caltrans. So I don't want to be part of, or requesting a requirement to do that as part of this project, because I'd rather have the building repaired than have the applicant deal for a year with Caltrans about putting gravel in the front. It's just, it's just not our, it's not in our jurisdiction. It's in the jurisdiction of Caltrans, that area.
Well, that being the case, I'm assuming that the maintenance of the grassy patches is the responsibility of the building owner, despite the fact that it's on the Caltrans right of way. I mean, Caltrans doesn't maintain the serviceability of the right-of-ways anywhere that I know of.
You can't do work, you cannot encroach on a state highway right of way and do work without first getting approval from Caltrans.
You mean even a weed whacker?
Whether or not the building owner does that, it is state land, essentially, and the jurisdiction is Caltrans, it's not the property owner, and it's not the city of Sonoma.
Okay, well, I, I understand, I would just suggest that if, if the applicant wouldn't mind, is exploring your options. I agree with Commissioner Willers, I don't want to do anything that gets in the way of getting this work done, because it's been an eyesore for a long time. But it would be great to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly, so see what you can find out.
Okay, thank you, noted.
Any other questions from the commissioner? Okay, thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'll open it up now for public comment on this project.
Good evening, Tom Conlon, I live outside the city limits, but I bicycle, and I also appreciate the conversation just now, especially the blight mitigation of this project, it has been sitting there for a long time. I will admit too that I subscribe to the adage, Sonoma Valley is for wine, Napa Valley is for auto parts. But I, I have a couple of questions, I'm also a Napa Auto Parts customer, and I did walk there recently and encountered the unserviceable nature of that, that whole strip right there. I also read through the packet and see that the temporary plastic K-rail-like devices that would be there to protect, I think they're there to protect the workers from the road, and that the pedestrians would be even more squeezed during the temporary period. And I also think that would be a temporary encroachment into Caltrans, and you'd need to get some kind of approval to do that. But it being temporary, it might be easier than a permanent change. All that said, I appreciate the conversation about decomposed granite, knowing that that, the other thing is that I think that the Caltrans right of way actually extends to the building footprint, if I didn't, if I read the, so potentially this, they could declare it a nonconforming use and restrict it right of way accordingly, or they could require, I guess, at some point to have the building moved. So I also don't want to slow the project down, but I appreciate that we need to make the highway much more serviceable in that area for alternative modes of transport. It's, it's now in your active transportation plan as one of the priorities of the city to address that. I also had some secondary questions about Title 24 compliance, if you're going to be rebuilding those walls, it's a warehouse use, as I understand it. Does that mean insulation, new HVAC systems? Didn't see that addressed in the application. And then finally, considering the, the green-blue infrastructure, GreenLinks concept, I think there's been talk about having access to make that creek more usable, potentially in the future. And I don't know anything about how that, this opportunity might be an opportunity to begin discussions with the property owner about that. My comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a question for the applicant of whether, or the staff regarding the insulation at HVAC.
So all of the improvements that would be required through the building code will be applied during the building permit process, depending on what the actual use that's being proposed. Right now, we are talking storage, and those improvements that would be required around being a storage use. And so the building code will have those requirements, including the Title 24 requirements.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more comments, I'll close the, the comment section to the public, and then come back to the commission for any comments on this project. Commissioner Wyatt?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to extend my thanks to the applicant for undertaking this project, it's long overdue in my opinion, and, you know, this is kind of a unique building that I think we all do enjoy seeing and driving by in Sonoma, and the, you know, eyesore that it's caused by that, that fire damage a while ago is, I'm glad to hear that there's steps being taken towards remedying that, so thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I have one, and it echoes what Commissioner Barnett was, was discussing, that's why I asked the question, is we don't want to impede on the progress, but anything that we can do to make sure that Caltrans also doesn't impede in this progress, and, and if it is possible to get a more nonvehicular friendly walkway gravel in the front, because there are things that are going to be connecting to this. I, you know, if we build it, they will come, and things will happen, and people will walk around this. So I would ask that the applicant staff see if this is possible, without causing too much delay in the project. And with regard to the, the green-blue infrastructure, the riparian zone, you know, I don't know what the opportunities are, so I don't know if there's at least a conversation, or to see if there's an accessible point there from this property. So I would just offer those comments to staff and to the applicant. Thank you.
With no other comments, then I'll make a motion for this agenda item.
I'll make a motion. I, I would, I would move to approve the use permit for the reconstruction of the nonconforming structure at 19425 Sonoma Highway.
Second.
All right, will we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wyrick?
Yes.
Chair Donbok?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries 601.
We're such an agreeable commission, aren't we?
Well, for the most part, I guess.
All right, now we're moving on to items for discussion, item 5.1. This is a study session to review a proposed site design for a 120-unit multifamily residential development on a 4.97 acre parcel at 20540 Broadway.
Hello, Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director, so I am going to staff this study session. This is my first study session with you all, so if I do something wrong, just let me know, okay? All right, so as I understand it, per guidelines for study session, this is an opportunity for our planning commission to identify any issues, concerns, but commissioners will refrain from making any statements that provide any absolute kind of judgment, because that could be considered a bias, or forming an opinion before the project is actually before you for hearing. So the planning commission feedback is provided in a study session to focus on the site planning, compatibility with neighboring uses, overall consistency with general plan policies, scale of mass, and potentially significant environmental impacts. Go ahead.
Commissioner Barnett?
I, I guess my question isn't, perhaps you're going to review this, but given that this application has been made under terms of SB 330.
It's not.
It is not?
No, I'll go into that in a second.
Okay, so is there actually the likelihood that if this project applicant decides to move forward, there would be an application that would come before this commission?
Yes, so I'm going to explain SB 330. So I'm going to finish this study session, my next slide is SB 330.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so then, also with the study session, the prospective applicant is expected to provide an overview of their concept and answer any questions. That was supposed to be from the planning commission, sorry about that. The chair has the discretion to invite the applicant and/or the public to return for further comments during the process. And the comments on the study session item should be directed towards the project as you see it, and then we will not be doing any straw votes, or polls, or things like that. And any of the comments that are being made tonight by the commissioners would not be construed as limiting any future actions. So SB 330, this, the chair did ask that I talk a little bit about SB 330. So right now, what you have submitted to the city is this study session proposal, a study session application. So the city has a process by which if you have a larger project, or other things going on, then you can submit first, basically the pre-application, and we'll do a study session, and that's what this is today. You've had a couple of other ones that were also developments, one also was a, a project similar, not in the same location, but in the sense just outside the city boundary, where you talked about pre-zoning and annexation. So the project that you're going to hear about tonight is literally just on the outside of our city boundary, in those five acres, and it does require pre-zoning and an annexation, and the intent is part of that process, that it will include a development proposal. And so that will be brought before you. So that's, that's a project. Before a applicant submits a housing project, or a mixed-use project that qualifies under the definition, which is what you're going to, what you see on this first slide, is they can submit under SB 330. So this was called the Housing Crisis Act, it was from 2019, and if it meets any of those following criteria, then the applicant can submit an SB 330. So can't be located within a very high fire severity zone, but it would need to also be a residential project. It could be a mixed-use development, but it has to meet the two-thirds criteria. And then, or it can be a transitional housing or supportive housing project. So those are the criteria to submit under, a pre-application under SB 330. So we have available to applicants online, an SB 330 application. This law has been amended through the years, like all of our state housing laws have, very slightly. It's, the time was extended on this one most recently. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood that there are criteria, so this project could submit, because they are a residential project, under SB 330, and they noted in their narrative that they intend to do such. So the SB 330 preliminary application is required for applicants with eligible projects that, and what they're doing is they're seeking vesting and processing benefits under the SB 330. So it's going to lock in the development requirements, the standards, and the fees at the time a complete application is submitted. So a complete application for terms of a pre-application under SB 330 is different than a complete application for purposes of an entitlement. Pre-application under the law is, did they submit everything that's required for a pre-application or SB 330? SB 330 specifically tells us what has to be submitted, what questions have to be answered. And so that's what our pre-application does. It says, are you, do you have historic resource on your site? Are you in the high fire? Are you in a flood plain? Are you, so it's going to ask all those questions. It also allows the project, it will, so it'll lock in all the requirements, but it also locks in what they're proposing. So if you submit an SB 330 preliminary application with saying all the details of I'm going to do, you know, this case, it's 120 units, they can't deviate more than 20% of that project, the number of units, without basically getting rid of their pre-application that they had locked in, those development standards and those fees. They also are going to tell us what, whether or not they're doing density bonus, but as you know, in this case, in the narrative, they did talk about it, and then they would need to say what their concession or waiver requests are. The construction of the project must commence within two and a half years, or three and a half years if it was an affordable housing project. There is a definition for affordable housing project, which is basically 100%, following the date that the formal discretionary project receives final approval, and there's a definition of final approval on that last bullet. So it does also, by doing this, it's saying you have to commence construction within this time, and if you don't, then, again, that pre-development or that pre-application under SB 330 is going to go away. So all those fees you locked in, and those standards, they're going away, and so when they ask for an extension, that doesn't apply anymore, if that's the case. Okay? There is, and I can share these slides too, there is a little diagram that There is a little diagram that just talks about, was it deemed submitted or not? And then we have requirements that we have to respond and tell them certain things. So let's say it was deemed submitted, they have 180 calendar days from that acceptance date to submit a formal development application. So they have six months to lock it in with their formal application. If they don't, again, their pre-application is gone. So there's lots of timing that happens with pre-applications under SB 330 that we will keep track of all the dates as they apply.
But are, and now I'm confused again.
It's okay.
The pre-application is under the terms of SB 330?
So they have not submitted a pre-application under SB 330.
Okay, but I meant, I saw in the project narrative materials, reference to SB 330 and their intention to do it.
Their intention to do it.
And so I'll go back to my original question, which is if they do in fact submit this as a SB 330 project, will this ever return to the planning commission?
Yes.
Under what basis?
For all the entitlements.
For the, but are just, but there's certain entitlements which are now ministerial, if I understand them?
No, so SB 330 does not create a ministerial process. SB 330 is really, the intent is to streamline the process and lock in development standards. So let's say a large housing project came through, and we make changes to the zoning code during that time, while we're going through their completeness checks for an entitlement. This basically locks in the code as they know it, so as we are making changes, that's not going to affect them. That's the idea behind SB 330, is really to just lock down standards, your fees and everything from that date. So as we change fees, if we changed fees beyond CPI, those new fees would not apply, only the fees in which they apply. So they will still require pre-zoning, annexation, use permit, all the different entitlements for this site, design review.
So their use of the term ministerial in the materials I read was misused?
Yes, I would have to look again where they used that word.
They used it, they used it several times.
So there's aspects of, ministerial is not the correct term, that as we know with SB 330 or any housing development projects, we have to use objective design standards. So I'm not quite sure when they were using, I'll have to look again where they used it. But they're still going to have entitlements, they're still going to go through the process. If you looked at their timeline, you can see where they've isolated those dates and things.
Okay, thank you.
We also limit them to five hearings, by the way, under SB 330. And then if they comply, then these are the findings that have to, if we, the project was to be not denied, these are the findings that would have to be made. So that is it, and the applicant is here to show their presentation.
All right, I would suggest we hear the presentation first and then have some questions afterwards. So for the applicant, as you said, they were online? Oh, all right, well, please, come on up.
Sorry. Just popped up for one second.
We're seeing it up here.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tyler White, I'm with Redtail Multifamily Land Development. We're the project applicant for the study session for tonight at 20540 Broadway, as Ms. Gates mentioned previously. I'm joined tonight by Dugan Garrison from Merrell Development Consultants, who's our project manager on this project, as well as our architect, Kevin Markarian from Piatac Architects. Thank you in advance for your time tonight in letting us share a little bit about our project. Dugan will give the bulk of the presentation tonight. But I recognize that most or all of you probably are not very familiar with our company, with Redtail. And so I just wanted to provide a quick background introduction to the company, to give you a little bit of context from where we're coming from. So Redtail is a multifamily developer, we're based out of Irvine, which is south of Los Angeles. We develop market rate and affordable multifamily housing. Our development projects focus mostly in California, however, we have other projects in mostly the western United States. We also have a portfolio of existing multifamily units throughout the United States and has given us kind of a, some broad experience in developing multifamily housing. And in doing that, in the various projects we've done, you know, we've recognized that every place that we go to develop is different. Every place has its own unique features, own housing preferences and tastes. And Sonoma is not, is not immune from that. We recognize Sonoma's unique place. And, you know, a project that we would normally build in Riverside County in Southern California or a project we would build in a place like San Luis Obispo County, isn't necessarily the project for here. And that's something that's important to us. And a reason why we've hired some local architects and local consultant base, rather, to help us and advise us, you know, we, in order to navigate the challenges unique with any city, even though we haven't necessarily been here in this city before, we can hire and work with people who have. So Piatac Architects is the architect that's on this project, but they also worked on Altima Drone, which is here in the city, they've done some other work, Mahonia Glen in Santa Rosa. They also have some other extensive experience in the Bay Area, in the North Bay. I know they're breaking ground on a teacher housing project in the city of Berkeley pretty soon. So them, along with our civil engineer and other consultants, help us to navigate again some of the challenges that come up and that are unique to cities like Sonoma. So on the Redtail side as well, we do have local ownership experience in the city of Santa Rosa. Arrive Sonoma Ridge is a multifamily development owned by a sister company of Redtail's. We're also finishing up developments in Solano County, in the city of Vacaville and Sisson City. So we think, you know, our multifamily experience, as well as experience and guidance from local consultants will help to make this project something that will be successful. Here's just a sampling of some projects that we've worked on recently. Again, most of our projects are focused in California. Our kind of bread and butter is lower-density garden-style type product townhomes as well that fit in with the surrounding uses. I might touch on some of this already, of working with local consultants. The last thing I'll leave you with before I turn over to Dugan is something that's important to us is our strategy as a company is to be long-term holders of assets. So some companies develop, or some developers develop, lease up, and get out of town and sell the project as quick as possible. That's not our goal here. We want to be partners with the city in bringing and developing a project that's, that everyone can be proud of. We want to be good stewards of the project, of the property that we're proposing to build on, and think that's important to recognize. And so that's why we're here, to solicit feedback and comments from the commission, as well as public. I'm glad everyone weathered the storm here that's left over. We're excited to hear and engage with you, answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dugan.
Thank you, Tyler, appreciate it. Thank you also, Jennifer, for your time in presenting that great presentation earlier. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Dugan Garrison, and I am the consulting project manager for Redtail Multifamily Land Development. I appreciate the opportunity to present our proposed project, sorry, present our proposed project at 20540 Broadway and provide an overview of the development vision, endowment process, and next steps. The proposed development at 20540 Broadway is a 120-unit multifamily residential project on a 4.98 acre site. Here's some, the project is designed to meet the city's housing needs while complementing the character of the surrounding area. Here are some key project details. As noted, we have a total unit count of 120 units. Our density is 24 dwelling units per acre, and we are proposing to provide six very low-income inclusionary housing units, which equates to 5% of the overall community unit count. We're using state density bonus law to utilize a 20% density bonus and increase our allowable density to 24 dwelling units per acre. So as you can see here, the 4.98 acre site is currently outside the city boundary, but within the sphere of influence and urban growth boundary. Nearby development is that Altima Drone project that our architect Piatac worked on, and you can see it on the map here, just about half a mile up from our project. Also in close proximity to our project are Creekside High School, Presswood Elementary School, Sonoma Valley High School, and Adelle Harrison Middle School. Most of those schools are within half a mile of our project site. And then within four miles of our project site is the Sonoma Valley Fire Station Headquarters and Sonoma Valley Hospital. This proximity to schools and other community assets makes the location ideal for housing opportunities. General plan and zoning. So the project aligns with the city's general plan designation of gateway commercial, which allows for residential density of 20 units per acre. The site is currently not zoned, but pre-zoning to the commercial gateway zoning is proposed to support the project's residential component. The project requires annexation into the city and the county sanitation district, which will proceed concurrently with the development application. We have started the entitlement process with the submission of the pre-development application for today's study session. As Jennifer noted, we have not submitted an SB 330 application or any other entitlement applications. In discussion with city staff, the required entitlements include annexation into the city, a use permit for multifamily housing within the commercial gateway zone, and design review. Our analysis of the environmental review is in progress. We are working with city planning to assess potential CEQA exemptions, such as an infill exemption, other categorical exemption. The necessary environmental and technical studies are ongoing. Shown on the screen is the conceptual site plan. The project design emphasizes high-quality, pedestrian-friendly, and sustainable housing with modern amenities. The site plan includes well-designed building layouts, parking, open space, and landscaping to enhance the community. We welcome your feedback today, and will carefully consider all comments as we continue working with the city and community. And where feasible, we will refine and update the site plan to reflect the input received. We understand that traffic impacts are going to be an important concern for the community, and particularly along Broadway, it already is a concern. As part of our commitment to responsible development, we are actively coordinating with the city of Sonoma and Caltrans to discuss necessary roadway improvements. This Friday, tomorrow, we will be meeting with both agencies to evaluate what enhancements may be required to support traffic flow, improve pedestrian safety, and ensure efficient access to and from the site. We are committed to working collaboratively to address these comments, these concerns, and integrate any required improvements into the project's planning. On the screen now, you can see some very preliminary renderings of our site. So on the top two pictures, you can see the proposed or conceptual residential buildings. And then on the bottom two pictures, you can see the proposed community amenity building. So the architectural renderings, we hope, reflect an attractive, modern, multifamily housing development. On this site, on this slide, you can see the Altima Drone project once again. We'll kind of use in our project in terms of copying some of those details and architectural components. Obviously, our site is a little bit different from theirs, but with Piatac being on our team, I think we can successfully form a great, beautiful site. Another project that Piatac has worked on in nearby areas is the Mahonia Glen-Santa Rosa project that was mentioned earlier. With that, this project presents an opportunity to expand high-quality rental housing within the city of Sonoma while aligning with the city's general plan vision. We look forward to continued discussions with the planning commission, city staff, and the community. Feedback from the study session will help refine the project as we move forward in the entitlement and environmental review process. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners at this time?
Are you in contract on the property?
Yes.
You are, okay. Full disclosure, I represented developers recently in contract, and we rescinded because of the court-appointed referee situation, and we just, it was a challenge that we didn't want to take on. So I congratulate you that you've made it that far.
Thank you. All congratulations goes to our development team.
Any other comments from commissioners, questions? I have four questions for you. The first one, with regard to the Broadway roadway enhancements, I'm just curious if those can feasibly or are feasibly including any pedestrian or non-vehicular access? That's question one.
Yeah, so we haven't gotten too far into it, obviously, it's been a poll trying to get Caltrans incorporated, and so that meeting will be held tomorrow. The goal is to, you know, implement some of those pedestrian facilities along Broadway. I don't know how far we can extend it beyond our project frontage, because that's no longer our property, and it's not even, it's going to be Caltrans property, but also a neighbor's property, so we will provide what we can, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The second question is in regard to the sizes of the unit and your intended target population?
Yeah, so the sizes of the units are all going to fall under the 850-square-foot marker to, you know, use that existing code that is put in place in order to buy it affordability, even though it's not an inclusionary housing project. So that's to answer the unit size question. What was the other?
I haven't asked you that. Okay, so with regard to, I have, the final two questions are with regard to your inclusionary housing. So you mentioned that you, that Redtail has experience with both market rate and affordable. So of the five units that you intend to include, will you be managing those?
It's six units.
Pardon me, six units, yeah.
Five percent, and then, yes, we'd still manage those, that's correct.
Okay, and the final question I save for last is, you know, for the record, our code is 25% inclusionary, but we do have an exemption for 850 square feet. So, you know, going down from 25 units to six units, and I do understand that your target population is a smaller unit for what we call, I guess, affordable by design. Would you please articulate how you came up with the 5%?
It was mainly, the 5% is one of the measures under state density bonus law, where if you provide 5% very low, you're allowed to get a 20% density bonus. And so that is where that number came about.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
Well, I've got some questions for staff, so nothing specifically for the applicant. The only, I guess, the question I would have for you is, most of these, I believe, are one-bedroom units?
I would say that I think it's actually the majority, I think it's 50/50 between one bed and two bed.
And do you, these are all going to be rental units? And this may not be a question you can answer very easily at this point, but... And, this may not be a question you can answer very easily at this point, but where do you think the rents are gonna fall?
Yeah, I mean, hard to tell right now, depends on the market. We are, you know, going to be setting our market, or our rents based off the market in the area at that time.
Okay, I was, are you doing any research into the current local rental market? Are you gonna be setting your price based on, based on the demand or are you, are you targeting these to be available, particular audience? I guess, I ask you all this because the, the notion of the 850 square foot exemption to the inclusionary requirement is in the nature of an experiment. That is to say, we want to encourage affordability by design and see if it works as a concept.
Right.
So, that's why I say this is in the nature of an experiment. We haven't had a project built yet under this criteria and so we don't know what the net effect is going to be in terms of rental prices, whether they're gonna be at market or above market or, or, so, I, I know I can't pin you down tonight to give me a number. Around the corner from me is a one-bedroom apartment in a duplex with a for-rent sign-up and they're charging $1,750 a month. Which for Sonoma is not an unreasonable number. But, I think that our hope and the reason the 850 square foot exemption was put in place was to see, is if it, and you're meeting the criteria, multifamily, shared wall, rental housing, will it produce a market-affordable unit?
Right. And that, that is the goal, you know, we're trying to help achieve that goal with the city. And to kind of answer your question, your initial question, we don't know yet either. I mean, we've done, we're doing our research, we've done our research in terms of market rents and everything like that to date, but we don't know how it's gonna stand or what our decision is for setting those rents in the future, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, you're going to kind of set the pace for whether or not this concept is workable.
Hopefully.
I mean, either you, you'll, you'll provide a proof of concept or it won't pencil out and we'll have to, in the future, consider changing the exemption number.
Okay, got it. And, also to clarify that question that did come up to Jennifer earlier in regards to ministerial versus discretionary, that was a mistaken inclusion. I know we found, once he brought it up, we also know that should not have been included, so.
I see, thank you for that.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Any other, Commissioner?
So, along my 850 rule, that's in, I have a basic question and that is, obviously, you found that rule to be an incentive for producing small-scale rental units as a way of overcoming the 25% inclusionary requirement. From a developer perspective, the 25% inclusionary development or inclusionary requirement, does what to the market rate units that exist after the fact?
You're talking about for any other development?
So, if you were to develop this project, rental project, as a 25% inclusionary project rather than an 850 exception project, what happens to the market rate units after you're required to do 25% inclusionary?
That's a good question. I don't know personally, I haven't developed a project with 25% inclusionary and really analyzed it in terms of how it affects the other market rate rents.
Where would the dollars go for those 25% inclusionary units? Where would the dollars come from, basically? Would they become from future rents in the, in the units if the market bared it?
I don't know. Yeah. I'll try to speak to this.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. So, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding correctly. So, your, your question is where the dollars would come from? If we were to build a 25% affordable project, where the dollars would come from to kind of cover the, the loss in rents?
The subsidy of your construction of those 25% inclusionary units.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So, the way that development works and site planning works is informed a lot by our underwriting and essentially, what it comes down to is that the, the, the rents that, that we assume in our underwriting, they, the rents that, that we assume in our underwriting really affect whether a project is gonna be feasible. And so, to us, a project that is gonna be, us, an inclusionary project, we're not talking about a tax credit project that's financed separately. A project that is inclusionary oftentimes might not pencil and be feasible.
Right.
And so, yes, that, to answer your question, the, the rents would have to be made up by the market, or the, the loss in rents and the affordable would have to be made up by the market rents, but in, in our experience in underwriting, those projects most oftentimes don't, don't pencil.
Meaning that you can't raise the rents high enough to cover the subsidy of the 25%?
Correct.
Right. Thanks.
Yep.
Go ahead, Commissioner Barnett.
Okay, I've got a question for our planning director. This has to do with annexation. My understanding is that Lafco will not approve an island annexation. And, the implication of that would be that not only this parcel, but the parcels adjacent to the city boundary, between this parcel and the city boundary, if there are some, would also have to be annexed into the city so we don't end up with an island annexation. Is that correct?
That is correct. This parcel is directly adjacent to our city boundary.
It is.
And we are in discussions with Lafco about what that means and if they would, what's considered an island versus not. So typically, it's more of like what you were talking about where there's this space where there's a parcel in between and then that parcel would then also need to be annexed. And so, that is something that we're gonna need to look closer at during that annexation process.
Well, if, if I recall the map and I'm just visualizing it, there's an undeveloped parcel across from the parking lot at Friedman Brothers. Is that currently within the city boundary and is the, a gas station, I see Don here who owns a gas station? It's all in the city? Okay, so that's in the cities. So, so this island situation doesn't come up with this property?
Not in that clear definition of an island. So an island would be, today would be what we would, train town, train town's an island.
Yes. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Willers? Did you have a que, a question?
No.
I have one, one question, it may not be very articulate, but, and this is, I guess, for you Jennifer. The, it's more of the design, does, does this project have to have the new fire standards with regard to design in terms of material and, and vegetation?
So, I'm not quite, are you talking about as, for a very high fire zone as far as vegetation? Cause we, this isn't in that zone. And so, it would have to meet our building code requirements for this area. And so, that building code would then set what, based on spacing between buildings and things like that. In this case, we're looking at making sure that we have the fire truck turnaround areas and where we don't, making sure that we have standpipes and then that, what you see there is that secondary fire access is, with Cogier, is a conversation piece as well.
Okay, thank you. Professor, Commissioner Nujer?
Yes, for staff. The annexation process, it, it is, is it is a case-by-case process for, for a parcel? I'm thinking specifically, is, is 20250 Napa Road, is that, is that city property or county?
It's in the city.
That is city. So, the annexation process is, it just comes by case-by-case as opposed to like, have we identified other parcels that could be?
So, what the?
Immediately?
So, there are a number of parcels in this vicinity that could be annexed at the same time through an annexation process. What we have done is, in our sphere of influence, which has already been identified with Lafco, we've already identified areas that we would potentially annex in the future at some point. And that's where the, the urban growth boundary is. It's a continuous with that. There is an opportunity, if desired, that the city could annex this whole basically square and not just this one that's a project. This project has come forward requesting to go through the process for annexation. The city has not started that process. We have not pre-zoned this area, so that would be part of an annexation process is that we have to pre-zone it. And so, in the case, we have a couple of sites in town where we've have vacant lots that are just on the edges that, I, one of them came before you before of looking at what that would be for pre-zoning and annexation. And typically, it's consistent with what we've already identified in our general plan juice.
Any other questions?
Is the Cogier facility within the city limits?
Yes, it is. So the city limits go right to this, do you, can you see my arrow?
Yes.
Okay. So that, this is the corner, right here, of the city limits. So this property right here, that is not in the city?
Right.
This is in the city. This property, this property, and everything parallel along Broadway all the way to Leveroni is in the county.
Right. And this, what noted on this map is the secondary fire evacuation access through the adjacent property. Is that going to be a, a solid fence or is that going to be walkable? And would a pedestrian be able to walk through there and then walk through the parking lot at Cogier and make their way out to Napa Road?
That is one of the conversations that is being had with the fire department on what the requirements would be or the needs are and then also as part of an agreement that would be made with Cogier. Definitely in the time of an emergency, that would need to be accessible by all.
Yes, and I'm just thinking in terms of enhancing the pedestrian experience in this part of town, providing some alternate walking that doesn't require walking along Broadway would, would be great. And to think of the encouragement of alternate pathways and greenways through the city is to be encouraged, so I hope that that can work.
Cogier would have to agree via an easement to allow that to happen because you're, otherwise you're trespassing on private property.
Yep.
All right, any other questions from Commissioners? Well, at this time, I'll open it up to the public for any comments on this project.
Hi again, thanks for the opportunity, Tom Conlon. Outside the city limits is where I live. I'm generally supportive of a high-density residential project at this location. We've had this in our general plan, anticipating annexation for quite some time. Glad to see it's 100% residential as proposed. I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around the inclusionary requirements. It sounds like, if I understand this correctly, the applicant is using the state 5% number to trump local higher numbers. But, that is a comp, offset by the, I'm seeing Bill shaking his head, so I maybe would like to hear that just explained a little bit more, that 6% deed-restricted inclusionary is quite small by our city standards, but obviously, all the units are gonna be small and therefore theoretically affordable by design. We had that little discussion just now about how to pencil these things. Still, I think it's interesting to see the state struggling with the locals on how to get it. We, we want a lot of inclusionary, we want to get a lot of actually deed-restricted because who knows, maybe the market rates for those small units will skyrocket in Sonoma at some point. We, we won't have control of that if we lose deed-restricted. I have some questions about the SB 330 phasing. It sounds like the city's requirements, because it's ultimately gonna be a city application, the, the timeline, the number of meetings, even though it's an annexation, this, how will that work out? Well, there's, there's two jurisdictions that these, this project's gonna need to go to. Will the SB time clocks start when it gets submitted to the city and then all the county meetings are outside the scope of that time clock? I don't understand how that SB 330 process would work here. Quickly, do the objective design standards the city has right now, are those reflected in the sketches that were submitted in this study session? The full massing at that three stories, that might be fine, but I, I just was curious about that. And then, is the project overparked? I think that some of the Commissioner comments around wanting to encourage alternative modes of travel to and from the site, I think maybe we could relax some of the parking requirement if there was additional accommodation to EV parking, TNC, paratransit, if that Cogier access were provided. I mean, employees might want a place to live, this might be an ideal place to walk to the Cogier operation. If you beg my indulgence for a few more, and then, no, I think, oh, and, right. SB 330, did it expire on January 1st and has it been extended? I'm not sure about that, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So, so because, they have six low-cost units and then because of the SB 330, they can actually add in another additional 25% more unit? Oh, okay. But still, I'm kind of, I mean, market value, low, it's family units but at 845 square feet, I mean, single parent with one kid's gonna have a hard time living in that after about they turn 12. And can all these hotel workers live there? They probably can't afford those rents. So I'm curious if this is really even a good idea for the city. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I'm, I'm Don Thompson. I'm their neighbor. I'm trying to remember, you sent a little notice out to all of the neighbors about if the, future discussions on this project, if they're not brought up at a meeting, they can't be addressed at future meetings. I'm not sure if I understood that right or not. So, in that case, if, since I'm up here and I don't know too much about, I'd like to make sure the floods, this, this is a flood zone where we're at, and I'd like that to be addressed in, in all your discussions and then also traffic. It's probably been brought up before, but I just wanted to make sure since I'm a neighbor that those two items were discussed. So, that's what I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Ken Stokes again, and it's really more a process question. At what point in the process will the egress, egress and emergency evacuation impacts of putting 150 to 300 plus? uh impacts of putting a hundred and fifty to three hundred plus people at the entrance to the city be addressed in the process? So it's not a judgment, it's a question about when that occurs, uh at what point along the development timeline.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Caitlin Cornwall for Sonoma Valley Collaborative. Um uh just wondering how much more, how many more units or how much more affordability might be feasibly financially possible if there was less parking, if the parking requirement was less. The collaborative's perspective and most pro-housing organizations' perspective is that parking requirements should be much reduced or even eliminated. And um maybe that's a bridge too far, but maybe they could be reduced and that might have some beneficial gains.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the uh public comment session. Uh procedural question for Jennifer. There were some questions that were brought up, and I'm wondering if you want to address some of those that are fairly straightforward.
Okay. All right, so the first one. Um so the law that allows the increase in density is called density bonus. And under the density bonus law, there are a percentage of affordable units that are being provided then tells us how many extra percentage of density you can get. And so in this case, the applicant is looking at an increase of density of the twenty percent. And so if they provide five percent at very low, that allows them that extra density. Um so that's that part of it. The city has an inclusionary ordinance. So cities have the option to adopt inclusionary ordinances. Not all cities do. Density bonus, state law, inclusionary ordinance, city law. So our city law says that we have a twenty-five percent inclusionary requirement with multiple different uh percentages of all the different um types. So moderate, low, and very low um are the specific ones that are identified. It has a exception in there that if you're doing a multifamily project and you have um square footage of less than eight hundred and fifty square feet, then those units don't count as being units that you attack on that twenty-five percent of which need to be provided as inclusionary. So while they're stating six percent or six units inclusionary, actually, it's six density bonus units. There are zero inclusionary units being provided technically. Um so that's a little bit of the confusion, probably. Um now, I will also say, I mean, that's something that we can talk through the process. But density bonus also says what the year limits are on parcels based on if it's for rent or for ownership on what that limit on the number of years it can be um affordable. Our inclusionary ordinance requires in perpetuity. Okay? So those are the two differences between those those two. Um so again, it's not one or the other. Our city is typically both. We just have an exclusion that we can apply for inclusionary. SB three thirty. SB three thirty is in regards to a development project, the entitlements for that development project. So in this case, this project has other aspects that need to be done, the annexation and pre-zoning. We could separate them and they can do pre-zoning and annexation first if we wanted to go through that process without an actual project. Um I highly recommend that we do a whole project um and get the um uh annexation, pre-zoning, and the entitlements all as one process. Then those five meetings are going to apply to the development. The pre-zoning and the annexation has to go to city council for approval. That would not count towards those five meetings. If the project is appealed, that does count towards those five meetings. In the sense that if there if there's an appeal against those entitlements, that will be another meeting. So when you think of how many meetings we have on a project, just think if it's an appeal, you got to save one. Okay? Um so that's that one. Objective design standards. Um we in this commercial zone and with um our setbacks and those standards, so those standards are quantifiable typically. Um it at first blush, I haven't, we haven't gone into the details, but it looks like it's complying with all of the standards that we have. Um and that is part of what that also is allowed under density bonus is a variation of our standards. Um but that's something that will come later with the appu- actual application. Um let's see, parking. The parking, we um planning commission already had allowed for a reduction in parking for multifamily projects. Um no guest parking is required. Density bonus also does, and so they are consistent with both. So our the studios and one bedrooms, it's only one parking space per unit. And then for the two bedrooms, it's one and a half spaces per unit. So the average or your ratio is is looking at one point two five spaces per unit on this site right now. We, as you know, in our development code also have bike parking requirements, and so they will be required to comply with the bike parking as well. Okay? Um as part of this tonight is a is just a study session for pre-development. We have not had an application nor have we had an SB three thirty, so this does not count towards the SB three thirty-five meetings, nor does it count towards a public hearing that in which you need to make sure that you are stating concerns through letters or through the hearing itself if you intend to bring something up later in a legal process. And so um this is not one of those times where just having a open discussion, this is not a public hearing. When we start getting into the public hearing, that's where um a lot more of the concerns specifically from neighbors need to be brought up um in that process. The environmental has not been decided. Um it does not get decided until we have a completed project or a project that's been deemed complete. Um once we know what all the entitlements are going to be, as well as having the studies that are being required for this site. Um so there are a number of studies. They've highlighted some in their narrative of what those studies um were already starting. So we're talking about um potential impacts around egress and traffic safety, so we'll have the traffic study. Um we're looking at biology, we're looking, you know, we do will need to look at the flooding and what grading and stormwater and all the they'll have to meet all the requirements for uh the state law. So what we are trying to do at this part of the process is um get concerns now and then with the site and things, and then come back with an actual the studies, all of the drawings, including the civils, so showing where we're going to put the stormwater on the side, all those aspects that we want to make sure that we are in complete understanding of the whole project, so that when it goes to a building permit, there's really not a lot going to change. And we're also looking at making sure that we have water capacity, making sure that sewer um understands the needs. And then what are the improvements? Because they're going to want to know too, what improvements that they're going to need to do that are additional cost. So extending a line, growing a a pipe, making it larger, those types of things, the improvements that we need to put um in the ride of way, um undergrounding utilities, all those fun things that we do as part of the development. Um that's what we're looking at right now. So I think that answered all of them.
Yes, thank you. I have one question for you, a clarifying question. I want to make sure I understood with regard to the um the deed restriction. Um I think what I understood you saying is because this because the units, um the affordable units that are included are not part of our code, then they will not deed it into perpetuity. Is that correct?
Unless the applicant agrees to it.
Okay. Um and maybe I will just ask the applicant to consider that. I don't know if you've ever done that in other municipalities of um, you know, gone beyond the fifty-five years or whatever it is and and worked with a municipality to to deed into perpetuity so that we have continued affordable housing?
Commissioner, thank you for that. Um to to answer your question, we uh on our other affordable project typically has been the fifty-five years that um that we're following, but we can definitely take the the perpetuity into consideration as we kind of go back to the drawing board.
Thank you. Uh any other uh I think we'll close the the session for the public and I'll ask again for any comments from the commissioners based on the information that has been given. Commissioner Willers.
Um generally, my comments are, I think this is a um for the commission, this is a great study session, quite honestly. Because what what you have in front of you is a project that meets our zoning code, meets our parking, our new parking standards, um utilizes an element of our code to produce small units as a way of relieving an expense to a project that the twenty-five percent bears on almost any market rate project. Um and I will make a comment that twenty-five percent is a difficult inclusionary requirement in the market to meet. So my while you may want twenty-five percent or higher inclusionary units, the the negative effect of that of that ask is that you probably will get fewer housing projects and housing units. Because it essentially stifles the buildability, buildability and performa of development. So um so yes, this is an experiment, but I think this project shows two things. It shows the eight fifty exclusion working. The developer is utilizing the density bonus um to provide very low-income units to the city. That very low-income threshold allows through the density bonus a twenty percent inclusion, a twenty percent um increase in density, which we want. We want more units. Um and it appears to me, having looked the having looked at the site plan and looked at the at the buildings, they it essentially meets our multifamily objective standards. Um and so this is a this is a representation of what our multifamily residential standards produce produces a street with cars on it, no garages tied up into buildings. So you don't have the access requirements of streets having to get to a building or driveways having to get to the building, which frees up in turn all the green space that you see in turn in relationship to that. The building square footage allows more green area on the property. That more green area is going to benefit the property in the in its development in terms of meeting the stormwater management requirements, because those green areas can be also that. Um and in the way in which the for me, the way in which the property is site planned with the community building out front as a kind of street holder, as a low-scale building, much like um Ultimate Madrone. Um and the units at the back create not a wall of housing as an entry to our city, but as a gentle increase in density at twenty-four units per acre. It's one of the higher you know, density projects that we've had. And so I think this is a representation of what our zoning code can produce. And it's also, I believe, is a positive reflection on higher density that is compatible with our community. Um so I'm proud of what we've done in the zoning core code because I'm I like to see that the fact that it's producing what we intended it to produce. Um I'm all for inclusionary um affordable housing, but I I'm also aware that our community needs to produce housing. And um and I think for this project, those six units, if they became part of um our arena number forever and and stayed in um and stayed in our affordable housing mix would be a great benefit. So.
Commissioner Barton?
Well, I concur with um everything that Commissioner Willers said. Planning, planning isn't about having a crystal ball. Um land use planning is about uh bringing forth rational consideration, using our best judgment towards how we achieve a particular end. But we can't fully predict whether the plans we make will result in that specific outcome. Um it's uh it's just the nature of planning to be able to to uh come up with a concept. Um then see what the effect of um that concept is on the people who do the actual development and then evaluate whether or not the concept we'd come up with for planning was producing the effect that we wanted it to produce. And that's that's the whole game. Um it isn't a matter of absolutes. Um it's a matter in part of experimentation in response to the dynamic of a marketplace, which is changing all the time. We're not in a static world where we can perfectly predict outcomes. And so so what we need to do is try things and see how they work and then decide whether or not to change it based on that evaluation. So the cycle is create a goal and then policies and then look at the outcome and evaluate the results and potentially change the plan again. And this is basically a a a circle of decision-making that has to do with a rational process of of idea, observation, and outcome, and then evaluating it. Um there's been a lot of talk about the missing middle housing and housing for uh local workers. This is this is, I think, the kind of project that uh our planning efforts have encouraged. And that's the kind of uh hopefully, the kind of residence you will get in here. Um it remains to be seen what the prices are going to be, and if we're right, um then we will have succeeded in our planning effort. And if we're wrong, we'll have to try something else a little different. When it comes to affordable in housing and the inclusionary units, I just want to go back to reminding everyone that the term affordable housing isn't what it was always called. In the past, when I first came to this community and got involved in government, we generally referred to it as subsidized housing, which meant without government assistance, meaning money, it wouldn't get built. And so the term subsidized housing began to get attacked because it sounded like kind some some kind of socialistic program. And anytime government does subsidize something, you can say it has a socialized element to it. But that's what the marketplace demands. As long as we're in a money-driven, capitalist-driven cost of land, cost of construction, world of development, uh somebody's going to have to cover some of the quote-unquote losses that underpriced units generate. Now, historically, that was called subsidized. Now it's called affordable housing, but the process is exactly the same. If we're going to reach our arena numbers, we're going to have to subsidize the inclusionary units. We can demand it, but as Mr. Willers has noted, if it doesn't pencil out, doesn't matter what we demand, because we'll get nothing. So to me, the key to success of the inclusionary requirement and the whole subject of affordable housing, capital A, has always been about whether or not the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and and the city of Sonoma can put money on the table. We're being very slow about accumulating funds in the trust fund. It's a matter of great concern to me. It remains the most advantageous vehicle with the greatest potential to stimulate affordable housing, and it's not accumulating money fast enough. And so I'm hoping that in the in the next year or two, and this is a city council a decision, not a planning commission decision, there's decisions made to increase the revenues that are going toward the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. there's decisions made to increase the revenues that are going toward the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Because that is what is going to subsidize the losses for the developers. It's just that simple, and it's never been any different, and it will never be any different than that. That's just the world of economics, and we have to live with it. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually very pleased with this. And I think that, that, you know, it's exciting to see what our plans have produced. And I appreciate the interest of the developer in coming forward to even consider doing something like this. We're not seeing things like this happen in Sonoma very much. So it's quite encouraging to see it happen, and that's great. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I'll just briefly jump in and say that I, I join wholeheartedly in the comments of the commissioners who spoke before me. This, this is representative of a project that very much meets, meets the objective and captures the spirit of what we want our standards to produce. And I think that the developer, at least in this proposal, has, has met, you know, worked within the confines of what's required of them and have taken advantage of certain benefits, which, you know, may very well result in, what, what they were intended to result in, and that is the creation of, of housing. And I'm impressed by this, I'm encouraged by this, and I, I look forward to what the future might hold around this project.
Commissioner Willers.
I just want to make a couple of additional comments that I, I meant to make earlier. Our rental housing, in, if you look at our housing element and the data that's in our housing element, of all of the housing, rental housing units in the city of Sonoma, 93 or 4% of those rental units are inhabited by one to three people. Anytime you get above, so, so the number that inhabit the remaining units, the 5%, are the families. So the demand in our community is 98% for small units. It's not 98% for family units. It just doesn't exist because that doesn't happen with, and so producing these units fills that need. And, and honestly, we don't have households beyond, you know, our average household size in the city of Sonoma is 1.75, something like that. Not that that's a good thing, and not that we don't want that to be different, but it's also the reality of who can live here. And I, I think these small units do offer two things. The ability for those smaller family units to have a place to live here that are affordable. And because they are smaller, they will continue to be affordable in the marketplace. They will always be the least common denominator in terms of dollars per square foot for rent in the marketplace.
Anyone else? I'll just make a final comment, you know, add on to this, that I appreciate the applicant, you know, coming to Sonoma and submitting this application. And when it comes to housing, we just need volume, volume and diversity. And, you know, this is a step in that direction of, of one kind of housing that we can develop here in addition to inclusionary. So it'll take us a variety of different methods to try to get this housing. So again, I appreciate that you're coming, chatting with us, allowing us to give you input tonight. And if there is no other comment, I think we're, we've completed this study session. All right, and thank you for the public comments as well. All right, on to, to item six, director comments and announcements.
So I have everybody signed up for the planning commissioner training except for the two individuals that can't make it. So I look forward to seeing you all in two weeks. In Santa Rosa. If you did not receive that information, or it should be at your personal emails, I sent it, I had it all sent to your personal email. If you cannot find it, please let me know as soon as possible so I can have CalCities send it to you again.
Can I get those dates?
March 5th through the 7th.
And is anybody going to organize any carpooling or anything?
I'm also happy, I can fit three additional people comfortably. So since we can't, I don't know how you want to coordinate that, Jennifer.
I'm going to trust you.
Okay.
Because you guys are going to be at a, at a huge event all together too, so.
All right.
That's how it goes.
Well, we'll work it out without, you know, violating any Brown Act.
There you go. So yeah, so if you don't see the information, please let me know, but you should all be signed up. It is, oh my goodness, I forgot, is it the Hilton by the airport? Is that what it was? So it's over by the airport, that's all I know, that's all I can remember off the top of my head, sorry about that. I can send more information via email, but like I said, you should all be signed up. If for some reason you're not, just text me, most of you have, you can text actually my landline, and it'll go to my phone, I have it set up that way. The other is the March meeting. Question has been brought up in regards to the conflict with the All Call Day. So March 20th is the All Call Day event. And there are potentially two members, I think, that would like to go at this time. That would drop us down to, one, two, three, four, five members if Sheila's back for that one. So I don't know who all wanted to go, other than the two that I know about. So we can discuss moving that date. At that meeting right now, I do have a public hearing item. I would like that meeting, to be honest, I want to use that meeting to do our goals, reanalyze our goal setting, reestablish our ad hocs to focus on some specific projects, and look at the council goals, because the council goals will be ratified on the meeting of March 5th that night. So if I don't want to cancel it, I want to, if we want to have it on that date, and we'll just have some absences, as long as we have quorum, we'll be fine, we'll just miss some people, or we can potentially look at moving it.
Should we consider that? Moving?
My recommendation would be to move it to the Thursday preceding or the Thursday after.
Well, I'll just give one minute. All right, March. What's 26th is the?
Normally, it would be on the 20th.
Yes, I'm just trying to, there's a couple of meetings that we haven't put into the calendar yet, so it's usually, the 26th is going to be a meeting, and the 24th is going to be a meeting, so 27th is a possibility, and the 13th is, so Thursdays are typically good. So if that is a, right? I would recommend personally the 27th, just because the timing of everything. I'm actually only going to be in the office for three more days over the next two weeks. So it'd be great if we put it to the last one.
20, 27th works best for me as well.
It's fine.
Okay. All right, so I will look to move that date, and we'll do a special meeting on the 27th. And the, that concludes my comments, those are the only things I wanted to highlight.
Commissioner Barnett.
I noticed recently that the parcel at Pecarthur and Broadway is now for sale. I don't know, I mean, this isn't typically a function of the planning commission, it isn't agendized. I would really love to see the city of Sonoma buy that parcel and have it developed to fulfill the goals of the city, rather than the goals of some developer. And tell me, Jennifer, the best way of conveying that opinion to our city council? Is it something that each of us should communicate individually with them about? As I say, it's not agendized as a topic for us, and it's not even in our, it's not even in our wheelhouse to consider.
Right, so it's not agendized to discuss as a group, so please don't discuss. So my recommendation would be you can talk to your individual commissioner that appointed you, or council member, sorry, that pointed you. And then you guys can always speak at meetings, just not as representing of the commission, you're representing yourself and your interest and sharing information. I did not know it was for sale, I would, I don't drive that street, so is it posted, or is it just?
Yeah, there's a sign up, and. Yeah, yeah. Why, what's the price, do you know?
Maybe there's an opportunity for the community to help raise money.
Oh, well, you know, and I will convey this to my city council members, that, you know, the city could explore an option on the property for a reasonable sum, for a considerable period of time that would give the city the opportunity to mobilize the community that talks a lot about wanting housing, and, and see if it's really ready to put its money where its mouth is. And, and then, you know, if the, they don't exercise the, the option, so be it. But at least they could keep it from falling into somebody else's hands for a while. That's my, going to be, what I'm going to be talking to them about, but I'm not suggesting you do anything. I'm just telling you what I'm going to do.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I have two comments, maybe one's a question. The first one is the Montaldo project that's coming up in the city. The question is, is it, is it possible for that project to also go in front of the SVCAC? And that's something that the city can determine if they want that, that's question one.
So I'm going to go with no, because I don't, yeah. So part of it is, so just remember, the commissioner reports and comments are just to bring up comments and things like that. We can, and if there's certain questions, so not for discussion purposes, but just to let you know, again, we've got SB 330, we own housing development projects. So when I wrote the SVCAC's new agreement, we're not bringing forward things, we can bring things. I can bring information, and, but that, we are not having presentations to them because we do not want that to impact our ability to have meetings on projects in general. And so that is not our intent to bring housing development projects to them. I'm more than happy to present, just like you guys present what's going on with the city, and I'm more than happy to present what's going on for projects that are coming up. This being another example of a project coming up, right? So, so we, I'm more than happy to do that in general. And I think that's what I put in there as well. As such, and as I said before, when the environmental documents are released for projects, those are sent to the contacts at the, all the agencies, including the representative for SVCAC. And as a commission, they can provide comments as a commission on environmental reports.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that you had rewritten that section, but it sounds, sounds wonderful.
It was written in the 90s, so I just kind of gave a little update.
That's fine. I've had questions about it, so now I can take that information back. The other comment for consideration for a future agendized item, when it's appropriate, is maybe having a discussion around our inclusionary code. And I, I recognize that you are in the midst of a nexus study, trying to understand, you know, the needs, our needs. I also understand that we're right in the middle of an experiment of the code. But I guess there may be some potential discussion on, for our inclusionary, do we want to keep it at 25%? Do we want to change it? So it's kind of an additive part of that discussion, or how we might want to think about what we have, what we have accomplished. For example, Rena numbers that we, you know, where are we at with those Rena numbers? So again, just wondering if we can have that as a future agendized item for discussion.
And always just to let you know, as chair, you can ask for anything you want on the agenda.
I'm asking for that, then. Wine at our, I'm just kidding.
I don't know what the restrictions are on that.
I don't think we can do that.
Commissioner Willers.
So I just want to bring up a little thing about density bonuses, because we talked about density bonuses tonight. Most people seem to be unaware of what that actually means. But, but the state allows you, based on the number of affordable units in your project, to get extra units in your project as a way of offsetting the cost of those inclusionary units. But just as a way of example, because we do have a 25% inclusionary requirement in normal construction. And if those 25% inclusionary units were built as very low and low income units in a normal market rate project, there would be a 50% density bonus on that project. So our 20 units the acre, which is the highest density currently, would bump to 30 units to the acre. So there is incentive by the state to offset some of those costs. But it also, in my mind, is counter, in many ways, to what, what that means is those 25% can be down at the marginal income rate, but we will get more market rate units as a result of it. And typically, more market rate units at a higher cost, where I think the function of what we're doing currently with the small footprint and load is much more satisfactory in the long run, and that's my lobbying for the night, so.
Commissioner Barnett.
I want to follow up on something Jennifer said. I was on the city council when the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, it was called, was formed. And it was intended to be an opportunity for projects that had an impact on both the city and the valley to be discussed by the public. Now, based on what you've just said, but, but as a commission, it has no regulatory authority whatsoever. It is an advisory commission. It doesn't have any approval process, it has no regulatory authority. So are you saying that the five-meeting rule applies to a body with no regulatory authority?
That is correct. If you make the applicant go before a body, even if it's a public, so if we made them do a community meeting, that counts as one of the meetings.
Wow.
Yes.
I am, you know, I don't know what the intention of the state was and who funded this particular piece of legislation. All I can say is what they have effectively done now is muzzled the community and removed the opportunity for the, exactly the kind of back and forth and general discussion about projects with impacts on communities that the commission was set up to do. They have essentially invalidated the purpose of that commission from the standpoint of project consideration. I don't even know why we have the commission anymore, what do they do?
Donna can tell you what they do, but I do want to, when I say project, I'm talking about like housing development, right? So those are the specific ones, and when I said EIRs, because we do. So those are the specific ones, and when I said EIRs, because we do want additional opportunities, right? Like you were saying, and representation, and I know that this group is really trying hard to get more participation in their meetings from the community on different projects. I've presented twice now on the general plan at those meetings, and so the intent is still to bring our broader, larger changes that would impact the broader community, such as a general plan, to them. So that'll still be the intent for our stuff and our projects, is to go to them still because we are a valley, we recognize that. It's just, we have limitations now by the law, and we want to make sure that we use those meetings as best as possible.
Well, I understand that, and I get the copies of the agendas of that commission. But, but essentially, it was large commercial projects and large housing projects, things with major impact on both communities, valley and the city, that was the, that was the impetus for the creation of that commission. It wasn't to talk about, about equity. It wasn't to talk about, about issues that had to do with social structure and social policy. It was about looking at projects and the impacts of projects. And what you've just told me now, which I wasn't aware of, is that a non-regulatory body or a public, even a public meeting now qualifies as a meeting for the purposes of the five-meeting limit. I am just absolutely flabbergasted. And this is just another example to be of misguided state legislation that is undercutting both the public process and public voices. I'm just horrified to hear it.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Well, I appreciate the, the comments and discussion that we've had tonight, and even these comments, I mean, this is, to air these and, and just discuss them is what we're here for. But at this moment, I will move on to item eight, adjournment, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second? What are we, 8:35?